Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, Town of Oxford Board of Selectmen meeting. Time being seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. 7:00 PM, we have a public hearing for a poll petition for Oxbow Road to install two jointly owned polls and relocate two jointly owned polls submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England. I'll read the public hearing notice. "Under the provisions of the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 166, and any additions or amendments thereto, please be advised that at their meeting on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, at 7:05 PM, the Oxford Board of Selectmen will consider a request to give Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Oxbow Road, National Grid, to install two jointly owned polls and relocate two jointly owned polls on Oxbow Road, beginning at a point approximately 50 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Southbridge Road and Oxbow Road, and continuing approximately 474 feet in a northwest direction." Pausing. Am I reading the wrong one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my poll. Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Oh, I know why.
Just pausing.
That's 7:00 PM?
Yeah, there's a 7:00 and a 7:05.
You read the 7:05 one.
Yeah.
You read the 7:05 one.
Oh, on the Oxbow Road, it says 7:05, but I am reading the Oxbow Road one, which is...
Yeah, it was posted in the paper, that it was at 7:05.
The agenda is listed as Oxbow Road as 7:00 PM, so.
But if the public hearing says 7:05, don't we have to do the one that's posted as 7:00?
Oh, okay. Yep, I get what you're saying.
She reversed one, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Let me reset that. Okay, public hearing notice. "Under the provisions of General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 166, and any additions or amendments thereto, please be advised that at their meeting on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM, the Oxford Board of Selectmen will consider a request to give Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Leicester Street, National Grid, to relocate four jointly owned polls on Leicester Street, beginning at a point approximately 47 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Thayer Court and Leicester Street, and continuing approximately 293 feet in a northwest direction. Relocated polls, P1, P22, P23, and P24, Leicester Street, Leicester Street, sorry. Location approximately as shown on plan attached to poll petition. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. The petition can be found on the Board of Selectmen webpage at If you have any questions, you can contact the Selectmen's office at 508-987-6038, extension 6. This meeting will be held at the Town Hall, second floor meeting room, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, 01540. Public meeting. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. Public hearing is open. Let's see. Abra Singh?
Abra.
Abra Singh, sorry. Can you please join us up front here at the table? And you are the representative from National Grid?
Yep.
Okay.
I have the gentleman from TRC who was also a part of design here as well.
You can join us also.
Perfect.
Okay, so... So you're gonna be moving some?
Yeah, this is part of the DOT project. It's 602699, or 659, I think it's 99. But it's part of the relocations for that project, because they're widening the road for all of Route 20, so this is just part of that along Leicester Street.
Okay, okay. And then, let's see. Okay, so Jared takes notes. Expect, yeah, exceptions for it. Is there anybody in the public that wants to provide testimony in regards to the poll petition? Hearing none. Board members, do you have anything?
I just want to mention the note that Jared put in where he indicates we have an opticon receiver for emergency vehicles located next to pole 23 and needs to remain operational during the pole relocation. I'm sure you got a memo on it, but I just want to mention it, put it in as part of the...
Note of it and relay that with the DOT. They are, you know, responsible for coordinating with all utilities, so I will relay that to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since we have nobody to speak on this from the public, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. One absent. Public hearing for this is closed. And then I will entertain a motion that the board give Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated permission to relocate four jointly owned polls known as P1, P22, P23, and P24 on Leicester Street.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes.
Could I possibly suggest that we amend the motion to include that Jared's concerns need to be taken care of in order for it to happen, that the opticon must remain functional during the process
Okay.
in order for the approval to be valid, because it was important enough for him to make the note. I think that we should probably include it in the motion.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to include that the opticon on pole 23 needs to remain operational throughout the relocation of the poles.
Are you making the motion, or you want me to?
I'm amending it.
He's amending his motion.
Yes, sir.
So you want me to amend it?
Yes, please.
I will, I make that motion to amend, to amend it.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Great.
Motion second to the amendment. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes also. That's for an affirmative. One absent. The amended motion passes.
No, you just passed amending the motion, didn't you? Now don't we have to vote on the amended motion?
We...
Yeah.
Did we? Or did we vote to amend the motion?
We can be safe, probably, and just vote again.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended motion.
I make that motion.
I will second it.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, out of turn. Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. One absent. The amended motion passes. Okay. Another public hearing notice. "Under the provisions of General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 166, and any additions or amendments thereto, please be advised that at their meeting on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, at 7:05 PM, the Oxford Board of Selectmen will consider a request to give Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, permission to locate polls, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Oxbow Road, National Grid, to install two jointly owned polls and relocate two jointly owned polls on Oxbow Road, beginning at a point approximately 50 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Southbridge Road and Oxbow Road, and continuing approximately 474 feet in northwest direction. Relocate pole 1 and pole 2 on Oxbow Road, install pole 1-1 and pole 3-1, Oxbow Road. Location approximately as shown on the plan attached to the poll petition. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. The petition can be found on the Board of Selectmen webpage at If you have any questions, you can contact the Selectmen's office at 508-987-6038, extension 6. This meeting will be held at Town Hall, second floor meeting room, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., 01540.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. One absent. Public hearing is now open. Gentlemen representing National Grid, still in regards to the Route 20...
Yes, this is still part of the same DOT project. It was the, it is 602659. Yep, same DOT project.
Okay. No additional notes from DPW Director. Is there anybody in the public that wants to provide testimony? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. One absent. Public hearing for this poll petition is closed. I would entertain a motion that the board give Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England permission to install two jointly owned polls identified as pole 1-1 and 1-3, and relocate two jointly owned polls identified as pole 1 and pole 2 on Oxbow Road.
I make that motion.
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. One absent. That has passed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hey, can I get your contact information? Here, sure we can do it off time. Here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from November 30th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from November 30th, 2021, as written.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. For an affirmative. One absent. The minutes passed as written. Next item on the agenda is police candidate interviews. Chief sad.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Town Manager. I'm pleased to present to you this evening four candidates for the position of full-time police officer in the town of Oxford. Currently, I have them sequestered in an adjacent hallway, and I'll bring them out one by one for your review. At the end of the interviews, I would be asking the board to appoint three positions this evening. The first candidate that you will hear from is Mr. Patrick Chalker. Then we will have Justina Lapierre. Then we will have Alexander Rondon. And then Mr. Michael Buxton will round out the interviews. So with that, I will have the lieutenant bring in Mr. Chalker for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, he's coming in. Board members, in your packet, you have the police interview questions. We're gonna start at the top and work our way down with the one exception. Selectman Lamarche isn't here. You also have the scoring sheets. After we've interviewed the candidates, we'll recess while somebody tallies the score sheets. And then we'll come back from recess to deliberate what the results are and hear from the police chief for recommendations.
Okay, we'll start with Selectman Trionne.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And you are?
I am Patrick Chalker, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure I have the right person in the front. Would you like to begin?
All right. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, ma'am.
Thank you for coming in. I would like to know, why, like, what has drawn you to Oxford? Why do you want to work for the Oxford Police Department?
Just the, it sort of meets a common ground between like a larger city like Worcester and like my roots where I grew up in a smaller town of Chester, Mass., 2,000 people. So I, I still get the close-knit community aspect of it, as well as the resources for police departments, fire departments, and public service. So that kind of was what drew me to the town, ma'am.
And what three or four characteristics do you think a law enforcement officer should possess?
I would have to say first and foremost, integrity. Doing the right thing when no one's around, because that just shapes everyone, and that means you have good character if you show integrity. Honesty, always telling the truth. And I would have to say the most important is probably compassion. Just not knowing necessarily what the person you're dealing with at that specific day is going through, and just understanding them as a person first and foremost. Yeah, compassion would definitely be the biggest one, ma'am.
Thank you. Selectman LeBlanc?
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Why do you feel you're the best qualified candidate for this job tonight?
I honestly just think my life is kind of fast-tracked. So I actually joined the military my freshman year of college, and then went to basic training quick, came home, and they told us that deployment was in the pipeline all before I was 21. So I actually turned 21 when we were leaving. And just the opportunities that brought me at a young age allowed me to grow and experience things that I think are very helpful in this career choice. Working with local populations, helping train them, working with interpreters. I got to do some unmanned aerial vehicle training. Just being out there and being exposed to every kind of characteristic of the world, whether it's good or bad. I think that was very beneficial for me growing up privileged in America, so definitely shaped me in a positive way.
Thank you. How would you describe your personality?
I, I'm laid back, sir. I just like to learn, whether it's something I'm interested in or something that just I hear walking down the street. I always like to pick up on little conversations and just kind of learn what everyone's all about. And just every day, trying to get as much new information as I can and just get a little smarter, a little bit more more aware of my surroundings every day, I guess, sir.
Thank you. I'm all set, Cheryl.
Excuse me. Sorry, Mr. Chalker. You have not seen Double, my last name is also LeBlanc. Small town, but no relation, so...
Oh, come on, you know what I'm talking about.
I know, Norm likes to... Thank you for coming here tonight. We very much appreciate it. Why do you feel you are the best qualified applicant for the job?
I just believe that I, my character, the way I was...
I apologize. You've already answered that question. I looked at the wrong Select and LeBlanc question. My apologies.
You're a select woman.
I'm select woman. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Tell me about, let me re-ask a better question. How's that? Tell me about a time when you made a mistake, and how did you manage the situation, and what did you learn from that experience?
I would definitely have to say it was actually when I was away in Africa. We were supposed to go out and have a relaxing day out at an embassy, and I, my friend had told me that they planned on drinking a lot, and due to the ramifications, I was already against it, but I didn't bring it up to my chain of command. And then one of my friends ended up getting hurt. And ever since that day, I can't let my colleagues or anything like that down again. So I strive to just keep, keep up on their well-being as much as possible, because that was one of the worst feelings I've ever had in my life.
Gotcha. Is there anything that makes you a bit apprehensive about being a law enforcement officer?
I just feel like it has to be the, the unknown from the outside. I have family that's in law enforcement, but even they don't really, like, discuss on the job activities that much, which I like to gather information, so that's kind of always been something that stuck with me. But that was the only real issue I ran into where I just couldn't gather enough information that I wanted, but that's because I'm a little bit obsessive with information, so.
Gotcha. And my last question is, based on your understanding of police work, what is it that you consider to be the most demanding part of the job?
I would have to say adapting. I think that's always gonna be the most important and most difficult aspect of the job. Because if you look back even two decades, it's unreal how much has changed in policing, society, what's being recorded all the time. Just going back to the integrity part, doing the right thing even when no one's looking. Just adapting to new ways of being a society, I would have to say, because it changes every day. There's new practices that we have to follow, and that's always gonna be difficult, I think.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I have.
Just a couple more questions this evening, and congratulations on making it thus far in the process so far.
Thank you, sir.
The first question I have for you, it's a little bit lengthy. Law enforcement is known to place a lot of stress on people employed in this profession. Police officers may struggle with marital and family difficulties, personal and emotional problems, alcoholism, and other difficulties. As an Oxford police officer, you will deal with criminals, drunks, abused children, grieving families, et cetera, and will be exposed to unpleasant, violent, and potentially life-threatening situations. What strategies would you recommend to an officer to help fight the stress and potential personal difficulties that are inherent in this job?
Sir, thanks for the question. I would have to say that it definitely comes to a strong foundation at home. Having the lighter aspects of the job that can be discussed, like, oh, hey, I'm having a bad day. I think that's more than fine to discuss with a spouse. But anything long-term, something horrible that you see on a day, I think mental health has a stigma on, especially in law enforcement and military. And I think it's important to kind of jump out in front of that and talk to someone while you're on the job. Because you never know when there's gonna be a day where you didn't talk to someone and it affects your job. And in this profession, that's, that can't happen. So I think addressing mental health immediately with whatever resources you can find within the department or on the side, I think that's critical, sir.
Thank you. Is there anything we haven't asked you that you would like to tell us about yourself and your candidacy?
I will show up every day if I'm hired with the same attitude of compassion, integrity, and honesty. I will work very hard. I will show grit, and I want nothing else but to help the people of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Those are all the questions that we have of you for this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Justina, correct?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
We just have a few questions that we'd like to ask of you this evening.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Don't be nervous. We're not that scary. What has drawn you to Oxford? Why do you want to work for the Oxford Police Department?
So I want to work in Oxford because I want to work for a town that has significance to me. I grew up here, and I would just be so honored and proud to serve the community I grew up in.
And what are three or four characteristics that you think a law enforcement officer should possess?
I think they should have integrity, to be truthful, and to have good communication skills and people skills. It's very important to be able to talk to people, pretty much talking to people all day. So I think that's an important trait to have.
Thank you.
Welcome. My two questions are, why do you feel you're the best qualified applicant for this particular position?
I believe that I am qualified for this position because of my training and experience. In 2016, I attended the Part-Time Police Academy and interned at Pittsburgh Police Department while I was going there. I, once I graduated, got on as an auxiliary police officer in Charlton and Southbridge, and I just recently graduated the Full-Time Academy in October, and also dispatch at a police department currently.
Good. Thank you. How would you describe your personality?
I think I'm very hardworking and outgoing. I have a very strong work ethic, and I love learning new things and challenging myself.
Okay, that was easy, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, tell me about a time when you made a mistake, how did you manage the situation and what did you learn from the experience?
That's a good question, I just need a moment to think about that. I can't think of like a specific mistake off the top of my head right this very second, but I would just be honest with um, if it was at work, I'd be honest with my supervisors and if it was with friends, I would just be honest and truthful and I think that's the best way to solve problems and.
Very good. Is there anything about, is there anything that makes you a bit apprehensive about being a law enforcement officer?
No.
And then based on your understanding of police work, what is it you consider to be the most demanding part of the job?
Um, sometimes you have to work long hours and um, the schedule is a little different than most jobs. You have to work weekends, holidays, overnights, so I think that's a very demanding part of the job, but it comes with the job, so.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Just a couple more questions and congratulations on making it thus far in the.
Thank you very much.
Process so far. Uh, the first one I have is a little bit lengthy. Uh, law enforcement is known to place a lot of stress on the people employed in the profession. Police officers may struggle with marital and family difficulties, personal and emotional problems, alcoholism and other difficulties. As an Oxford police officer, you will deal with criminals, drunks, abused children, grieving families, et cetera, and will be exposed to unpleasant, violent and potentially life-threatening situations. What strategies would you recommend to an officer to help fight the stress and potential personal difficulties that are inherent in the job?
Um, I think it's really important to have good stress outlets and I think it's really important to realize or uh recognize things in other people, um, their attitude and behavior if they're struggling, I think it's important to reach out to each other and I think it's really important to know that all of that comes with the job as well. If I knew somebody that I felt was struggling, I would offer them resources and myself, I would just have very good stress relieving outlets, like working out and I really like outdoors thing, um, doing things outdoors like kayaking, hiking and just being active, so I would try to encourage others to do that as well.
Thank you. And is there anything we haven't asked you that you would like to tell us about yourself and your candidacy?
It's a good question, too. I just think you guys should know that I'm a very hard worker and I would just be so honored and um proud to work in the town that I grew up.
Thank you.
And I don't get to ask a question.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
You are Alexander?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we just have some questions that we'd like to ask you this evening.
Absolutely.
Welcome, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well, ma'am.
What has drawn you to Oxford? Why do you wanna work for the Oxford Police Department?
My, I'm drawn to be an Oxford uh police officer, um, I uh haven't been in Oxford too long, but I recently moved here a few years ago, um, and the uh sense of community that I've seen in Oxford. The very tight-knit community, it's not a big town, but it's a uh small town. Um, and everyone does seem to be quite close and I'd like to hopefully become a part of that community.
What are three or four characteristics that you think a law enforcement officer should possess?
Three or four, I would say, uh, number one would be uh integrity, um, because you're trusted to uphold the law. So number one, if you can't have uh integrity in yourself, then how are you supposed to be trusted to uh uphold the law? Number two, I would say would be confidence, um, confidence to um be sure of yourself, but also be sure of uh what you're doing, your duties, um, and your ability to fulfill them. Number three, uh, I would say would be accountability, accountability of yourself, um, your fellow officers, whether it be your partner or whoever you're with, um, to be able to, again, hold yourself accountable and hold uh anyone else accountable. And I would say those would be the top three for me, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir, how are you?
Fine, thank you, I know how you are doing. First question, why do you feel you're the best applicant for this position?
I feel as though I'm the best applicant because I do, um, number one, um, I'm currently uh in the United States Marines and um, me going through uh the uh very strict uh training that I went through at Paris Island, I believe that I'm able to um uphold myself to a better standard than uh um anyone else applying for this uh position and also the uh confidence and ability to uh fulfill tasks. And I believe I should be uh trusted that and to also go above that as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How would you describe your personality?
Um, I would describe my personality as um easygoing, to be able to be flexible with uh what life gives me, but at the same time be able to um be sure of myself, but at the same time um go for what I want as well as being able to uh go with whatever life throws me, but still at the same time um fulfilling what I um want in life.
Very good, thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Good evening, Mr. Rangan.
Evening, ma'am.
Uh, based on your understanding of police work, what is it you consider to be the most demanding part of the job?
I believe the most demanding part of the job is to um essentially be the light in someone's darkness whenever, whenever their lowest point they're at right now, um, because police are there to um give light, give confidence, uh, be there for someone when uh they need it. In, in all honesty, I believe it's to have, again, like what I uh referenced earlier, confidence, the confidence to um be sure of yourself that you can handle whatever situation is thrown at you when someone else may not be able to.
Thank you. Tell me about a time when you made a mistake, how did you manage the situation and what did you learn from the experience?
Big mistake that I made, I would have to reference back to when I was at Paris Island for the Marine Corps. I uh had a battalion commander's inspection and I wasn't sure of myself and I hesitated on a question that I knew, but I wasn't sure of myself, um, so I uh paid for that dearly, but I learned that um to be sure of myself, even though if I'm wrong, it's better to be uh confident in wrong than to hesitate and be right. Um, so I learned that and that's something that I've carried with me for as long as I can.
Is there anything about, um, is there anything that makes you a bit apprehensive about a law enfor- being a law enforcement officer?
Uh, no, nothing makes me um second-guess being a law enforcement officer. It's something that I've been thinking about for a long time and something that I wanna uh carry out with my life.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Of course, thank you.
Just a couple more questions this evening and uh congratulations on making it thus far in the process so far. Uh, the first one's a bit lengthy. Law enforcement is known to place a lot of stress on the people employed in this profession. Police officers may struggle with uh marital and family difficulties, personal and emotional problems, alcoholism and other difficulties. As an Oxford police officer, you will deal with criminals, drunks, abused children, grieving families, et cetera, and will be exposed to unpleasant, violent and potentially life-threatening situations. What strategies would you recommend to an officer to help fight the stress and potential personal difficulties that is inherent to this job?
Um, what I would say is to uh stay true to yourself and uh stay true to your duties that you're being trusted to fulfill and carry out. There are a lot of obstacles that do come with this line of work and I do understand that, but um something that I would have to do as well as I would encourage anyone else to just stay true to yourself, stay true to um your oath and carry out and do whatever job is necessary of you, no matter how difficult it may be at times.
Thank you. Is there anything we haven't asked you that you would like to tell us about yourself and your candidacy?
I do not believe so at all.
Thank you.
I don't get to ask a question, I know, I'm just on the, I'm on the side watching.
Absolutely.
I think you're all set.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's that go-down-the-line syndrome, everybody looks at the law person.
Should've introduced everybody.
We've got their names on.
Yeah, yeah, they have, yeah.
You know how many?
Only three different names.
Oh, lordy.
Don't ever tell anybody I'm your father.
Sorry, excuse me.
You said that would be funny.
Maybe for you.
Evening, and welcome.
Evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
We just have a few questions to ask of you this evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we'll start at that end.
Welcome, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
What has drawn you to Oxford? Why do you wanna join the Oxford Police Department?
Well, my wife was um born and raised in this town, we started looking at houses in 2018 and um we, you know, she had me, she, she grew up here and she loves this town, her whole family lives here and she can, she convinced me to, to come here. So we came and looked at a house, we fell in love with the house, we fell in love with the neighborhood and we've been here for about three and a half, uh, about, yeah, going on three and a half years now and um it's just, it's su- it's such a great community, it's a tight-knit community. And um, I would be, I would be super grateful to just um be able to work in this community and um help the people of this community and try to be a positive, positive example to the people of this community. And joining the, um, why I wanna join the Oxford Police Department, um, because I feel like it's one of the finer departments in um, in Massachusetts and um all the officers, I know they take pride in their jobs and they, they develop in um relationships with the community and they're always, I follow them on social media and they're always out there in the community doing, doing hard work and developing positive, positive relationships within, for the town.
What are three or four characteristics that you think a law enforcement officer should possess?
I believe a law enforcement officer should possess um integrity. I feel like a law enforcement officer should always be honest um when it comes um to their job. I feel like they should possess um uh values as well, have good values. I also feel like they should possess um uh knowledge and skill, um, that comes with the job as well. And as well as just being tru- uh trust, trustworthy and this uh to build relationships, like I said, within the community and with this, um, with members of the public.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, just two questions, um, why do you feel you're the best qualified applicant for the job?
Um, I feel like my, I feel like I have, I have experience working in um a law enforcement type job. I, I work, I'm a correctional officer at the Worcester County Jail in House of Correction. I've been there for five years, I work in the medical intake unit. I'm responsible for booking in inmates into the facility, new arrests and inmates into the facility and um providing security in that building as well. I'm also one of the identification officers in that um department and I'm responsible for taking detailed fingerprints and uh photographs of inmates that come in. Like I said, I've been there for five years, I feel like I've developed like, learned how to work in a stressful environment. I know no two days are ever gonna be the same in this position and I'm up for the, um, I'm up for the challenge and I believe my experience um in the field definitely um had sent me apart from some of the other candidates.
Very good. How would you describe your personality?
My personality, I feel like I'm very, um, I feel like I'm kinda quiet, um, I can be shy. Uh, my presentation skills might need a little more um sharpening around the edges and stuff like that, but um, I feel like I'm very, I pride myself on integrity and always being honest with um, with my, with my family, my wife, um, my coworkers, um, my supervisors, everybody, um, so I feel like, feel like I'm good fit for this position.
Seems like you would be, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Based on your understanding of police work, what is it you consider to be the most demanding part of the job?
The most demanding part of the job? Most demanding is, I feel like you have to develop, like I stated before, you have to develop good relationships with the public and I feel like the public's perception of law enforcement right now um could be, you know, you know, it's not always great, you know, people and you can't let one um bad cop define the re- um, every, everybody. Cause there are a lot of um very, you know, honest and gr- officers with a great integrity that take pride in their jobs and um do it the, um, do it the right way. And um, I feel like it's a very demanding field, um, and a challenging field. I feel like you um, you are very, um, you have a lot of responsibilities to go out there and do your job the correct way.
Gotcha. Tell me about a time when you made a mistake and how did you manage the situation and what did you learn from that experience?
Time that I made a mistake, um, that can go back to, well, five years ago when I started at the jail. There was a fight on one of the tiers um between two inmates and there was an officer who was involved. Um, and it was kinda like there was a gate and there was lockdown and I was running the, the control booth and so what happened is I, I um, I left the booth area and there was nobody in there cause I was, I responded to the fight and I was, um, I was three days on the job and I wanted to go help my fellow officer, but you, you can't leave the booth, obviously, you can't leave the control booth and I did that and that was just um a learning experience for me and something that um I definitely, definitely um learned about and I never wanted, you know, I just wanna pride myself on being better and, you know, paying more attention to detail and my surroundings and everything like, and doing the best that I can to help, to help my, you know, um, help my fellow coworkers in that situation.
Is there anything that makes you a bit apprehensive about being a law enforcement officer?
A bit apprehensive, um, no, not really, I mean, I, I, um, this is what I wanna do, this is what I have a passion to do. I, I got into law enforcement, I wanted a challenging career, I wanted a rewarding career, like I stated, no two days are, I know no two days in this job, especially for this department, are, are never gonna be the same. And um, uh, um, this is what I wanna do and I'm very passionate about it.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just a couple more questions to go.
Yes, sir.
And congratulations on making it thus far.
Thank you, sir.
Process so far.
Thank you.
Uh, the first one, it's, law enforcement is known to place a lot of stress on the people employed in this profession. Police officers may struggle with marital and family difficulties, personal and emotional problems, alcohol, alcoholism and other difficulties. As an Oxford police officer, you will deal with criminals, drunks, abused children, grieving families and you will be exposed to unpleasant, violent and potentially life-threatening situations. What strategies would you recommend to an officer to help fight the stress and potential personal difficulties that are inherent in this job?
I feel like communicate, uh, communication and communicating with your fellow employees and always having somebody to talk to and always there to listen. I think listening is a big part of it and like, you know, you gotta listen to someone, maybe you can um relate to that, that person's um issues if you have similar stresses going on, you know, at home or anything like that. But I know the job can be very str- um, the, the job will get very stressful and very demanding um at times. I believe that we have a, um, we have a program in place at the, um, at the Sheriff's Department called the Critical Incident um Stress Management Team. So I feel like a program like that can definitely help, um, help uh to go to, to um, to, to talk about that, the stresses that are going on in your life and what's going on and as long as you have someone, I feel like as long as you have someone to talk to and someone to listen to what you're going through and just be, live a healthy, healthy um lifestyle and try to, you know, do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything we haven't asked you that you would like to tell us about yourself and your candidacy?
Well, like I said, um, my name's Michael, uh, my name's Michael Buckson, I'm thirty-one years old. I was born and raised in, in Worcester, Massachusetts, I attended Worcester Technical High. I was born and raised in Worcester, Massachusetts. I attended Worcester Technical High School, I graduated in 2009. Then I then attended Quinzigman Community College. I have an associate degree in criminal justice, I obtained that in 2016. I moved to Oxford in 2018 with my wife Chelsea. We currently reside in South Oxford in the Sherwood Forest neighborhood. I am also a corrections officer, as I said, at the jail. I've been there for five years. I feel like I'm a very, I pride myself, like I said, on integrity, honesty. I have a strong work ethic. I, and I feel like I'm definitely the right candidate for this job. I feel like my, my experience in law enforcement can definitely bring, and working in stressful situations and learn how to communicate, I've learned how to communicate more effectively to other jail and working in that type of environment and keeping, keeping an open mind to certain situations. And I feel like my experience is definitely, can bring, I can bring my experience from my past, well, my current job right now over to Oxford Police Department and serve this great town and this great community.
Thank you.
You're welcome sir.
That's all the questions we have for this evening.
Thank you sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So at this time, we'll enter into a recess to calculate up our score sheets. Five, probably five minutes, then we'll come back and we will have discussion on the candidates. So if we wanted to go down the line and I'll get the scores from each selectman. So we'll start with Patrick Chalker. Start with the vice chair.
My score for Mr. Chalker was 86.
Six.
Mr. Libley?
My score was 75.
And 97.
And my score was 73. I'll come back to those after math. And then Justina?
Let's see, Justina, I had 87.
Justina, I had 99.
92.
And my score, 85.
Average them while you're doing it?
Yes please, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
And then Alexander?
I have a score of 81.
I had a score of 79.
88.
And my score was 63.
Maya was 69 actually, sorry.
And then the last candidate. Okay.
Mr. Buxton, I had 74.
I had 83.
98.
And I had 77. Take a moment, do you mind averaging that one real quick? Yeah, I'm going to use a calculator because my bat sucks. And the average, sorry.
Oh, you want, oh, my apologies.
No, you're okay. Is there any further discussion that you'd like to have on candidates amongst ourselves? Or do we want to go through the averages and then on how we scored them?
I would just like to say that I think this is the most organized we've ever done it. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for all of their help in regards to this and the background packages were phenomenal. So thank you very much.
Can we hear the chief's input?
Yes, so Chief Sad, would you like to come up and make your recommendations?
Need any more help or you're good?
No, I'm going to give the averages.
First of all, I'd like to formally thank all the candidates for participating in the process and getting to this point. It's truly commendable for all four of them. Getting the candidates before you this evening has been a team effort and you can kind of see that based on the other offices before you this evening and also the extensive investigative backgrounds that you have had a chance to look at over the last week. So as you know, a complete thorough background investigation on each of the candidates has been done. I would like to thank formerly Detective LaBretton and Detective Abraham for their assistance in this regard and making this happen. On the 12th of January, interviews of the four candidates that you saw this evening were conducted at the PD by members of my command staff. Present was myself, Lieutenant Marcelonis, Sergeant Grenette, Sergeant Conlon, Sergeant Burdette. Sergeant Gifford was able to attend but he did forward questions that we presented on his behalf to the candidates. All of the candidates presented well, as I feel they did here tonight in a structured and stressful environment, really. In consideration of my recommendation to the board, I've taken into account several key factors that I want to bring to your attention. Those would be education and work experience related to the field of law enforcement, the results of the comprehensive background investigation before you this evening, the candidate's ability to follow instructions and complete tasks assigned to them at their initial indoctrination in the hiring process, how they performed at their interviews last month. To include these topics, initiative, appearance, communication skills, service skills, knowledge of the organization and the town, interpersonal and team-building skills, their desire to work for this community and more importantly, the critical objective views of the command staff. Taking all these factors into consideration, the department puts forth the following recommendations for the position of full-time police officer. Patrick John Chalker, Justina Michelle LaPierre and Michael John Buxton. Mr. Rondon was not recommended for the position this evening because of his comparative education, training and experience to the other candidates. In the future, I believe that he may prove to be a viable candidate. I'd like to thank him for participating in the process.
Thank you Chief. So that the board members are aware of the averages that I totaled up. Mr. Chalker's average score was 82.75 across the board. Ms. LaPierre's average was 90.75. Mr. Rondon's average was 75.25. And Mr. Buxton's was 83. With that being said, I would entertain a motion that the board offered the position of full-time police officer to Patrick John Chalker contingent upon the terms set out in the offer letter from the town of Oxford.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, or sorry, four in affirmative, one absent. I would entertain a motion that the board offer the position of full-time police officer to Justina Michelle LaPierre contingent upon the terms set out in the offer letter from the town of Oxford.
I make that motion?
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. And then I would entertain a motion that the board offer the position of full-time police officer to Michael John Buxton contingent upon the terms set out in the offer letter from the town of Oxford.
I make that motion?
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That is four in affirmative, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a request of the board regarding the appointment dates on the candidates. I would recommend that Justina LaPierre be appointed today, February 1st. Mr. Chalker and Mr. Buxton appointed tomorrow, February 2nd. The reason being is Ms. LaPierre has the full-time police academy. She will be able to start after completing a field training program. Mr. Buxton and Mr. Chalker will have to attend the police academy. There is one slated June 6th in Western Mass which they would go to and it would resolve, be resolved in November, just before Christmas they would get out and graduate from the academy if those plans go. I checked the academy openings today and there were nine openings in the Western Mass class. I'm hoping that tomorrow morning there are at least two still available. If that's the case, we'll immediately sign them up for those academy. If not, there's one that starts in July in Boylston, but that's almost a two-month swing. Obviously, we want to have these candidates starting as soon as possible. So the reason being for Justina is that she would be out and working well before the other two candidates. And that would give her the seniority that she would deserve, in my opinion.
I'll...
I would, I would make that motion?
I will second it.
Yeah, the motion's been made to appoint...
Justina LaPierre?
Justina LaPierre on February 1st as a full-time police officer and Patrick Chalker and Michael Buxton on February 2nd for full-time police officer. And the motion was seconded as well?
Yes, I did second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes for an affirmative, one absent.
Great, thank you very much and I appreciate the board's time and effort in this regard tonight and I think we have very fine candidates that will serve this community well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you very much to the candidates for coming up and interviewing.
Welcome to the department.
Before I move on on the agenda, Dee, was there anything that needed to be done in regards to passing over candidates? Or is that just a... Did not need to. Okay, okay, just confirming.
Do you want all of our score cards?
Yes, make sure that you've printed and signed. And I believe that has to go to there.
Okay, we'll pass these down this way and give them to Dee.
I have to sign mine.
Those are mine.
Those are yours?
Do you need the average sheet?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. 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 You're good with me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The next item on the agenda is for Two Millberry Boulevard LLC doing business as Oxford's Casual Dining. The applications for the Common Vic and weekday entertainment licenses. Do we have, yes, if you want to come up and join us? You want to grab that chair? Yeah, I think you got moved to the side. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we got some licenses approved.
Yes.
We are very excited to, you know, be part of Oxford. And at the same time, you know, we're a little nervous but we're here and happy, you know, to have the license and to run Oxford's Casual Dining, so.
Looking to meet the community, you know?
Yeah. Where are you coming from?
Worcester. Nationality, we're Albanians.
Okay.
We've both been here for over 20 something years.
Okay.
But, yeah, we've been married for almost 20 years, we have two kids. But we live in Worcester, so, you know.
Okay.
I used to run the main restaurant in West Boyson.
Oh, yes.
For like 20 years, I was a chef there and just the opportunity to present himself, you know, to get my own place. I'm looking forward to it, you know?
They look a little tired, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, do you have any additional questions?
No.
Just welcome to Oxford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome to Oxford.
Would you like me to make the...
Yes please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the Common Vic license and weekday entertainment license for music, singing and dancing for Two Millberry Boulevard LLC DBA Oxford's Casual Dining.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. The licenses have been approved. Welcome to Oxford, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Excellent, we're excited, thank you. I know, it's so anticlimactic, I know. Sorry about that.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Hannah Harwood Scholarship Announcements and the applications are available. Selectwoman Triano had alluded to this in her community announcements last meeting. So the scholarship will be for $1,000. The applications are available in the selectman's office and online. And the scholarship has been posted to Webster Times, Yankee Express, along with going out on the town's social media page and emailed to local, public and private schools. And let's see. The deadline for the scholarship is April 1st, correct, is it?
Yes.
Oh, why don't I read this? Yeah. Please be advised that interested Oxford residents can apply for the Hannah Harwood Fund Scholarship. Applications are available beginning in January of each year. Applications can be obtained from the Board of Selectmen's Office at the Town Hall, 325 Main Street and on the town website at www.oxfordma.us/board-selectmen. The scholarship is awarded annually to the student who is entering undergraduate freshman year in the field of medicine or allied health. The scholarship amount for 2022 is $1,000 and half is paid in the first semester and half is paid in the second semester of school to the winning applicant. The deadline for submissions for the applications to the selectman's office is April 1st, 2022 at 12:30 PM. If you have any questions, please contact the selectman's office at 508-987-6027 at extension 6. If you have any questions, please contact the selectman's office at 508-987-6027 at extension 6. Board members, any further discussion? Okay. The next item on the agenda is vote to authorize Chairman, um, Michael F. Daniels to sign the civil service annual report.
Uh, I make the, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to authorize you as chairman to sign the civil service annual report.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. I will get that signed. The next item on the agenda is some, uh, review of some additional select board policies. Again, just trying to, um, work on that large three-ring binder that we have and kind of update some of our policies. The first one that you have before you tonight is the, uh, policy 103, which is animal control have-a-heart-trap policy. The policy states Chairman Sad said that he spoke with Sigmund Barnard, Animal Control Director, about the, uh, institution of a policy regarding the have-a-heart traps that are provided to the residents by the animal control department. Chairman Sad explained that the user of the trap would pay the town a deposit in the amount of thirty-five dollars. And when the trap is returned, the thirty-five-dollar deposit would be returned to the user. Chairman Sad that he would entertain a motion to make the policy in the town of Oxford. Motion by Selectman Coonan, seconded by Selectman, uh, Ralt?
Row.
Ro, row. Row, sorry. So, move, motion carried unanimously, and that was adopted May 22nd, 2001. The reason I present you this policy this evening, the, the policy is somewhat outdated. Uh, have-a-heart traps are not really, um, passed out as much as they used to be, if at all, from our animal control officers. I spoke with Kelly Flynn. Rules have really changed about transporting animals off property. You can trap them, but you can't remove them from your property. So therefore, the device is antiquated, really. There have been issues in towns where people have tried to trap gophers or woodchucks and wound up catching a skunk instead. That resulted in, um, person being ordered to remove the skunk from the have-a-heart trap, which never happened, and the skunk ultimately perished in the have-a-heart trap. And that person was held for animal cruelty. So, we're, we're trying to remove an antiquated, um, policy and also not be inhumane to our animals. The animal control officer, when I spoke to her, like I stated, really does not pass these out anymore. So, I would be looking to repeal, um, this policy this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that policy number 103 is repealed as a result of, um, communication with animal control that indicates that this policy is out of date and not used any longer.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 I will vote yes. That's four in affirmative, uh, one absent. The next policy, um, it's policy 1606, which is police rates. Police rates states construction six fifty, other six dollars, municipal four dollars. There is no supporting documentation to go along with this policy. One, having a discussion with Chief Sad, we came to the conclusion it might be, um, detail rates. However, uh, that is spelt out in the policemen's collective bargaining. So, this policy, again, is no longer needed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we repeal policy number 1606, which is titled Police Rates, based upon the fact that we don't have any supporting documentation regarding it. And after communication with Chief Sad, it appears that this is very outdated.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent.
Although I know somewhere in this town hall, there is a typewriter. Somewhere. There's, there's got to be one somewhere, right?
Should have showed it to the officers that we hired.
Right. This is starting pay.
Job, but this is the starting pay.
They would accept it.
They would. They would.
The next policy on the agenda is 1902 Alpha, policy for solicitors. It states any person selling any product or service, house to house, must have permission from the Board of Selectmen. Again, it's, uh, so the general bylaws for the town of Oxford spell out that the, any solicitors need to go through the police chief. Um, and since it's in the bylaws and solicitors no longer need to come to the Board of Selectmen, this policy, I think we can do away with.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we repeal policy number 1902A as a result of the fact that this item is actually referenced in our bylaws. And it is, in the, the police department is responsible for it.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. Next agenda item is going to be the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to, uh, the members of the board. The first item is to, uh, make sure that we're all intact after winter storm Keenan. Uh, I know that I had communicated a number of times with the board, uh, about our upcoming storm. This really was a very big undertaking for our department that we haven't seen for quite some time. We held, um, a number of meetings, but two, uh, preparation meetings, uh, in advance of the storm. I want to thank, uh, Chief Sad for, um, allowing us to be hosted at the PD while we looked at, uh, our emergency operation command center needs and our DPW director. I put in your packet, um, a memorandum that I asked our DPW director, along with, um, Steve Esposito, to put together, uh, just to give the board an idea of just how much involvement there is when we're preparing for a storm like we just had and what goes into it. And it's not inexpensive to have to actually address a storm of this magnitude. So it was a twenty-seven-hour event. Um, the DPW had over twenty-one pieces of equipment and sixteen pieces of contracted equipment mobilized. Additionally, we had, uh, six contracted shovelers that were utilized to clear buildings and sidewalks. We used, um, a hundred and ninety-five tons of treated salt. The total labor costs for the event were approximately thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars. And the salt costs were about fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, for a total of about sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. These funds, uh, at this moment, will not be reimbursable, but thank you. I want to say to every member of the crew, uh, the employees, the contractors alike, who tackled the major cleanup efforts, uh, to keep our streets, um, safe and secure. You know, at any time we have a major event like this, there's always the potential that declarations, uh, for emergency response get, response get made. So one of the things that we talked about in advance of the storm, obviously, was to continue, um, having excellent track record of, of keeping, um, close accounting of what goes on. So this is one of those examples of how we actually try to do that. And since this was a major weather event, um, today, actually, our DPW director had asked me to also mention, in the, in the spirit of climate change and having to deal with, um, a large, uh, winter event like this, the town has been undertaking, uh, two, uh, opportunities to, uh, take advantage of, uh, grant efforts. Uh, one related to the municipal vulnerability, um, planning preparedness grant program, and the other one, the hazard mitigation, uh, planning grant program. We're in the midst of doing both of those. I did tell the DPW director that I would mention that they, as of today, they put up the public survey for those, um, two initiatives. One is on the DPW's Facebook page, um, under the Oxford DPW. We're asking the public, um, as part of this process, to actually give input. And there is also an updated link, uh, for the MVP page on the town's website as well. And, um, and if we can try to do that, um, they'll also, that will, information that we collect, uh, from that planning survey will, um, go towards a presentation that will be publicly made on the fourteenth. We've had, uh, at least three different, um, sessions, uh, with our, uh, planning agency that we have commissioned to help us get through this. And the planning board will be the ones initially meeting on this. So, I decided to fold it together. Our director asked me to do that. And, um, not only are we busy taking care of storms, but they're also busy trying to put forward, um, two new plans for us, that will open us up to a lot of additional funding, uh, that will be helpful towards our DPW needs in the future. The second item is just to let the board know, we had our fiscal twenty-one audit by Roselli, Clark, and Associates. They've completed that audit. Our town finances are in excellent shape. I'm pleased to report that we received a very clean audit with no significant findings, so much so that there wasn't even a need, um, at this point in time, uh, to make, uh, specific recommendations for the town, which means that we've really accomplished an awful lot in the last several years. I do want to say a special thanks to, um, Katie McKenna and Tris Arker, uh, for working with our auditors and ensuring that they have everything, um, they needed to complete the audit, as well as our treasure collector's office, because I know that they do ask for a number of reports and also, um, do, uh, reporting, uh, with my office as well. OPEB valuation report. Um, this is one of the things that we created, an actual funding policy on a, on a regular basis annually. And we address that at town meeting as well as part of our budget. The Public Employee Retirement Administration's Commission, which is also known as PERAC, has released, um, the OPEB summary, which is in your packets here. I'm really pleased to state that our overall, not pleased to say we had an overall liability, but pleased to state that we're at a nine-point-three percent funding ratio for our overall liability, which is sixty-one million. And our OPEB is another acronym that we use for, um, uh, our public employee benefits, um, other public employee benefits once people retire. So we have that funding liability at sixty-one million. Um, the net, um, liability is about fifty-five million. The funding ratio is really important. Nine-point-three percent doesn't sound like an awful lot. But, uh, when you compare ourselves to other communities, you will see that that funding, um, ratio is actually very significant. And it shows that if the statewide average is only five-point-nine percent, we're ahead of that, um, even for our liability. So, again, we do a annual appropriation, um, in our budget to make sure that we are keeping, uh, consistent with putting money towards that overall liability. And I have mentioned before that our, um, OPEB funding level is, uh, well over five million. And there aren't, uh, many communities of our size that have that, um, actual, uh, funding ratio. And I'm very pleased that we are one of those. The next is just to let you know that our cherry sheets, uh, for fiscal year twenty-three, the first ones through the, uh, Division of Local Services has been posted. That is the beginning of what we start with the process for the state in their formulation of the budget. The governor's budget, um, is the first number that comes out. And there has been an increase of about two-point-seven percent over last year's, um, fiscal twenty-two, uh, budget numbers. That means after we look at what revenues the state is looking to bring in and what, um, uh, offsets that we have or expenses that we have that the, um, state will also account for, or we call them commonly as assessments. It looks like we may, um, have a, a net increase based on the governor's numbers of about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's significant for us, and so right now I'm working, uh, with Katie McKenna. And I've been already, uh, meeting with all of our department heads and finalizing my budget recommendations, which we will be doing, uh, with a joint meeting, um, and a presentation with the finance committee in, uh, early March. So that's all on track, but the number was significant. So I hope that both the, um, House and the Senate will go up a little bit on that, um, in one way or another. Annual town meeting warrant. Uh, so, this evening, um, I wanted to let you know that the, uh, annual town meeting warrant has opened as of today, February 1st, 2022. It will close on March 29th, 2022. Our department heads have been working on article submissions, um, to the Board of Selectmen, uh, for their ultimate approval for the, um, annual town meeting warrant. The next item is also to let you know that, uh, this year, in particular, the governor's office has come out early, uh, about Chapter Ninety. And as you know, Chapter Ninety is our overall, uh, funding that comes from the state for our road improvements and bridge improvements. In this year, because they're doing it early, I wanted to announce here that for fiscal, um, year 2023, unfortunately, it's going to be the same amount, um, across the board, of about two-hundred million. The Mass Municipal Association and Selectmen's Association and Managers Associations have been advocating for an increase to that number. That usually translates to about a half a million dollars for our town, and we all know, after having dealt with this on a number of, uh, years and looking at, uh, meeting our funding roadway needs, it, it is not adequate. Three-hundred million would have been much better number to come in at, but nevertheless, at least we'll know where we're going, once again, uh, for overall state spending, uh, to help us with our road improvements. On a different note, more positive than that funding level, I would say that, uh, we had also, uh, received word, and I have mentioned it before, and I've had some discussions with, uh, Selectman Norman LeBlank, about, um, articulating, uh, the appropriation that the town meeting members had made, uh, for the Leicester Street Bridge project had been done, uh, in 2021 at the annual town meeting. We had advocated and had an approval of about five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand in free cash for the rehabilitation of that, um, important bridge, uh, which has been known to be a significant, um, hazard bridge that needs repair. However, we have also been notified by the Mass DOT that there is a particular program called the Next Gen Program Listing. Uh, that bridge is considered a superstructure replacement eligible bridge. And they have now, um, as part of the state funding bridge repair and replacement program, have authorized the, um, 2020, um, Transportation Bond Bill for Next Gen to actually, um, accept and, um, approve the Leicester Street Bridge for funding. So this means that, that will, um, help, uh, fund the engineering and construction costs for that project. And, um, you know, our ultimate plan now will be to look at how can we reappropriate these funds, um, at the next town meeting for a similar type of project, um, and funding needs. So, this is excellent news. Again, it's, it's trying to be on the ground, working with Mass DOT, having them be aware of some of the projects that we are advancing. And when they see projects that are already being advanced by, um, the local townspeople, it means that, um, we're ready to go, or we've identified that we need to move proj, projects forward. And sometimes that actually works very good in that communication, because it puts us on the radar for other eligible things. And sometimes with all of the federal money, um, being block granted to the state, some of these programs have more money than they normally have. And so, voila, we're going to be in a good position for that, um, and it's very exciting.
Let's make a comment on that too, gentlemen.
Sure, go ahead.
I had a conversation with Jared about that. And something else I wasn't aware of that, the, at the five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, he said that the lifespan of that bridge would be twenty years. But he says now that the fact that the DOT's coming in, they're probably going to spend well over a million.
Sure.
And the lifespan of that bridge will go from twenty years to seventy years. So it's not only the money that we're taking advantage of, we're going to have, I won't be around when I have to fix that bridge next time. I don't know how many of you will either. So, sometimes that gets lost in the conversation.
Translation, yep.
It's not only the money, but now we're extending the lifetime of that bridge by another fifty years, so.
Right.
I congratulate you guys on working on that, getting that money for us.
Well, thank you. I, I think there, we have to identify that there, we have been, um, actively pursuing other additional funding for our smaller bridges. Uh, many of our bridges were constructed during the, um, uh, public works era, um, during the depression era. You can look at the actual imprinting on a lot of bridges. And, and it's amazing to think that they've lasted this long with little bits of money here and there. And I think what we were intending to do is put, um, a large amount of money for our local community towards a bridge, but then hopeful that, you know, that would at least extend some of the life. But Selectman LeBlank is right that, um, this is more about the state being able to offer a lot more assistance to actually bring longevity to it, so. So, excellent work by our engineering and our DPW, once again. Uh, the next item, of course, is wonderful news about the Mass Works announcement. I have received correspondence from the Housing and Economic Development, um, Secretary's Office, Mike Caneely, who is planning to actually come to Oxford on Thursday, February 24th, at around nine-thirty in the morning. This is when they'll give the official announcement for the Mass Works grant and, and have a number of, uh, people who will be speaking that day. I want to extend the invitation to the board. Uh, we're working on a location that will not necessarily be here at town hall, but perhaps at one of our businesses that are going to benefit from this major two-point-eight-million-dollar grant that's going to bring, um, Sewer onto the other side of Route Twenty. that's going to bring, um, Sewer onto the other side of Route twenty, um, prior to, um, the major, uh, Route twenty upgrades that, uh, is a multi-multi-million-dollar project for the D O T. But this is something we've been pursuing and, uh, might have to, we may have to invite the former D P W director since, since he was always, he's always been chiding me. So when's that money coming in? And so now I can say, it's here, Sean. Uh, Jared could say that too, uh, with, with great certainty. Um, the next item is about the ice rink on the common. Many of you have seen it. It looks very inviting and exciting. I've been asked, uh, by our D P W and our, um, Oxford Community Center just to wait a little bit longer. Right now, you know, we've obviously had snow on top of it, but it wasn't quite set, uh, when I was doing, uh, my actual report gathering, um, on Friday. Uh, we're hoping that, uh, folks don't use the rink until we actually announce it's ready to go. And, um, and we're trying to keep it as intact as possible, um, not to ruin the liner. And also to get it ready for our, um, wonderful, exciting, um, fun, family, uh, Frost, uh, Winter Festival, which is going to be, uh, from twelve to four on February nineteenth. And, um, for February Vacation Week, the Oxford Community Center has asked me, along with the library, to announce that they're having a variety of programs during school vacation week. Um, we're asking the public to check the websites and Facebook accounts, uh, for more information, but some of the programs are going to include, uh, kickball, an un-birthday party, uh, a Gaga pitball, uh, a ball pit, excuse me, not pitball, Dungeons and Dragons and more. But obviously, there's a lot of effort that goes into actually giving parents and family members and grandparents something to do during February vacation, and obviously, um, having the, uh, uh, Winter Festival, which is new, is going to be extraordinary. Uh, there's a lot of exciting things that are going to be captivating the, uh, attention of children and families. Uh, again, this is part of bringing people downtown, part of our master plan, part of bringing, um, tourists to our area, and, um, I'm not aware of other area communities that are doing, um, a very involved, uh, Winter Festival. So it's pretty exciting to, and hopefully the snow sticks around. So, uh, the next item is just to let, um, you all know that we were going to be distributing our final test kits. I had mentioned in our meeting last week, it's unbelievable, we had a meeting last week and then this week again, but, uh, due to the winter storm, uh, we had canceled it. I just want, um, to make the public announcement again that that has been rescheduled to this coming Saturday. Um, it will take place on February fifth, Saturday, at the Senior Center from ten to twelve P M. Um, if folks want to require a test kit prior to that Saturday, they can absolutely call the Oxford Board of Health at nine eight seven six zero four five, extension five. The last item is, um, is to provide, uh, another COVID update, um, and also, uh, information about a vaccine clinic. Uh, what's wonderful to, to have a, a full complement of our Board of Health is that we're able to take care of, um, and take advantage of, uh, resources from the state. So one of the things that we are doing in conjunction with Purple Shield and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is offering, through our Board of Health, a, a vaccine clinic at the Oxford Housing Authority, which will be, um, this week, February second, from nine A M. to two P M. And, um, they will be offering both the first, the second, and the booster doses of Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And, uh, preregistrations required, so people just need to contact our Board of Health and, um, get themselves vaccinated. And, and we can certainly attest to, uh, the fact, uh, with our numbers, that those people who are vaccinated are not coming down with, um, COVID to the extent that other people are. And the first time that I can say this is with a little bit more sense of relief, is that I believe we've turned that corner, uh, for COVID-nineteen surge that we had seen, um, during the holidays and immediately after. Our case counts went from, um, a high of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine over the week of January second and January eighth, and I'm happy to report that the case counts have come down this past week to ninety-three. So we are trending in the right direction. So that would conclude my, um, update, and, uh, I appreciate their attention of the board.
Yeah. That's good news.
Yes, it is. Fabulous news.
Uh, next item on the agenda is Selectmen's Community Announcement. Selectwoman LeBlanc.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, uh, very much. So I actually, um, I have a feeling we'll all be talking about this this evening, but I have a little bit of a different slant on this. Um, the, um, the, first of all, the D P W did a phenomenal job in the storm, not only for my little road, but, um, I was actually at, in a, a luncheon in Worcester on Monday, and I might have been commenting on the quality of snow plowing that occurred in Worcester. I might have been. Um, when I was standing around a group of people and they actually, and someone actually said, you know who does a really good job of plowing during storms? And they said Oxford. And, um, they didn't realize that I lived in town. They didn't realize what I did in town. But they, um, and it, and everyone in that group just started to chime together, and they were like, you know what? When we drive through town, you know, we can tell when one town starts and one start, one town stops, and Oxford just does a phenomenal job, and they always do. And I just thought that it would be, as much as the residents and, and we are always very, um, thankful for what they do, um, it is well noticed outside of the community as well. And I encourage Jared, and I support whatever he needs to do to provide the safety for the residents and the non-residents when it comes to these certain, these types of events. And, um, and I just thought I would share that story publicly, that that is, uh, really, um, it was, it was a funny thing that it happened. But, um, congratulations to them, and thank you so much for all of the hard work that it takes to do that particular job. Selectman LeBlanc.
I'm all set. Thank you.
The only thing I have, I feel like I'm a broken record, but I just wanted to say again, thank you to the D P W and staff and contractors. Again, wonderful job with the storm. I hope you get lots of rest this week, because apparently we're going to get hammered again this weekend. Um, you know, they just, they continue to do a great job storm after storm. Um, and just to the new hires for the police department, welcome again. Um, you'll fit in great and looking forward to working with you and Chief. Glad to have a full complement of your staff again. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, just one last thing. Um, again, just echoing off the D P W thing, I know they spoke highly, um, and thanked the residents for staying off the streets and making the job that they did, uh, so much easier. Um, with that being said, uh, Thursday, we're supposed to start with some rain, followed by another snowstorm, so plan on having icy snowy road conditions. And, um, yeah.
Let's do it again.
Stay out of the way of the D P W.
Sounds right. Maybe the groundhog will see his shadow tomorrow, right? Is it, does he have to see his shadow or not see his shadow? I don't know.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
He's just going to get more with her.
So I'm the optimist. Um, Meg's the realist, right?
The last couple mornings when my car has told me it was negative seven when I bring the kids to school, you know, I kind of just, my optimism just kind of fluttered away with the temperature.
So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.